That Center Cal is able to move forward with the project within that three-year period, RFCC will be given 90 days notice to vacate and would have to leave the premises ahead of that date. So, there's a couple of scenarios here, but ultimately, regardless of what happens with the waterfront, we're able to acquire the leasehold and control our fate for ultimately reconstruction of the parking structure at that three-year mark. There are other terms that were included as part of this deal. These were necessary ultimately to arrive at an agreement. One of them is that the current rent structure for the space, which is approximately $8,300 a month, the minimum rent, that that continue for the next three years, that there is no change to that minimum rent structure. The current leasehold agreements call for a periodic sort of revisiting of the rent and a renegotiation of the rent, so we would resolve that issue at 83.25 a month. It also fixes our current gross percentage rents, which vary for different things. 4% for foods and drinks, as an example, 6% for retail sales, 7% for arcade games, et cetera. Those rents and percentages would remain the same over the remaining three years of the leasehold life as well. The last deal point includes the option, and you'll recall that Mr. Shoemaker, the owner of RFCC, proposed this business concept to the city many years ago on parcel 10. The ability, if the city, and again, this is at the city and Center Cal's option, so ultimately if we desire the installation of a carousel, that Mr. Shoemaker, in his company, would ultimately have first right of refusal on the lease for operation of that space. That right of refusal option would ultimately expire five years after lease acquisition, so from date of amendment agreement, that would be an eight-year period or eight-year option. Again, what I can't stress enough is that that is in the city and Center Cal's control. We are not obligated to provide the ability to have a lease there. As the council knows, there are currently no plans for the installation of a carousel in the waterfront, nor is a carousel part of the approved project that Center Cal has proposed. So, that is not something that this council or currently Center Cal has proposed for installation. However, in the future, if a future council and/or Center Cal ultimately desired that, Mr. Shoemaker would have that initial right of refusal for that operation. That really comprises the structure of the deal. It's fairly simple. It's a sublease amendment that would go into effect upon approval tonight, if approved, and allow us to finally control what literally is the cornerstone of the pier parking structure. We cannot rebuild. We cannot move forward with redevelopment of the pier parking structure and frankly, from an engineering standpoint, much of the southern half of our waterfront without control of this leasehold. So, this acquisition is key for us, frankly, with or without Center Cal. If we don't, if ultimately Center Cal is not successful in moving forward, acquisition of this leasehold would give us the options and control that we've been seeking for quite some time. That concludes our presentation. We're here if you have any questions.
Thank you. I concur. I think it's, if we just remove the waterfront logo and remove Center Cal, it's still, it's now the city controls it and can do all the work on the parking structure and/or any way the initiative would go. It just, the city controls its property and like we've been buying piecemeal, the decor and everything else, so this gives the city at least an opportunity to move forward on that parking structure. And it doesn't matter which direction we go with the waterfront, and I think it's a fair deal. It's not like we stole it from him and he didn't steal it from us, and that's how negotiations are supposed to be.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt real briefly, one thing to note, that extra million dollars, I should mention, and this didn't come up on our LPF conversation, but Center Cal has agreed, in the event that they proceed, to pick up that additional million dollars. So, the cost to the city under all circumstances for the leasehold is $9 million. In the event that it moves forward, Center Cal has agreed to pick up the additional million.
Yeah, well, if we had to, we're not just repairing a parking garage, then we could renovate the whole thing. So, it's not just Band-Aid approach. Okay, Bill?
Thanks, Mayor. Mike, what happens in three years if, yeah, we execute this tonight and Center Cal doesn't happen, or they get stalled and three years comes? Are we, is he definitely vacating in three years and then we could have an empty building?
Yes. Under the terms of the agreement, he is obligated to vacate the premises on that three-year mark, regardless of Center Cal's status at the time.
Okay. It's a tough call. You know, I voted for it in closed session, but now I'm, I don't know, kind of on the fence. I'm curious what people think of this on both sides of it. It's a lot of money.
I agree with Mayor Aspel, too. You know, you control it.
Mayor, Mayor Council, I would also add that there are 10 years remaining on this leasehold, and so we would essentially be buying seven years' worth of operating time from RFCC. So, it's not relocation, it's not keeping him in the project, which some of the discussions were along those lines before. This is a buyout. This takes seven years off of his operation.
Yeah, which is a substantial amount of money to him, but it just gives us the opportunity to rebuild it if we have to do it ourselves. Steve?
So, Mike, Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to ask a silly question, which I like doing. Should I recuse myself at this point?
What?
I know of no reason for you to recuse yourself.
You know, I voted for the city in closed session, but I've changed my mind. I don't know if I can sit up here with an open mind about this anymore. I just don't think it's right, and maybe that's wrong of me, but I'm just having a tough, really tough time with this.
So, you don't have to recuse yourself because you changed your mind. This isn't a quasi-judicial hearing where you're sitting as a judge. You're deciding whether or not to enter into a business agreement, and so you can always abstain, should you choose. It's entirely your call, but there's not a situation where you're benefiting from it. You're not, you don't have any, that I'm aware of, any sort of conflict. You can choose to, giving direction to staff to move forward with negotiations is different than the final vote here tonight. It does not have to be the same. So, you can vote your conscience, as I always tell you, unless there's a violation of some other law. I'm not aware of any other violation of law.
No, just based on our comments that you and I had in the back.
Those are all valid reasons to change your mind and not necessarily reason. Now, if it makes you feel uncomfortable to change your mind and vote against it, you can always abstain.
No, it's not that. It's just, you know, I really respect public comment, and I just don't know if I'm going to hear anything out there that's going to change my mind.
It's, again, not a quasi-judicial hearing. It's sort of like, it's like passing a law. You can come in, you can campaign on, "I'm going to pass this law," and even if you hear the public say the opposite, you can go through with it. That's different from a quasi-judicial hearing where you owe due process to judge it only on the facts of the hearing. As the mayor indicated, this isn't a public hearing. You're elected, you're all elected, to bring your common sense and to bring your judgment, and there are a lot of competing policy issues here as to whether or not to go forward with this. So, I don't know of any reason that compels you to recuse yourself. That's not to say you can't.
Okay. So, I guess my first question, and I'm not sure if I can ask this either, how much is Shoemaker's lease worth?
So, value ultimately can be derived in a couple of different ways. One simple way is to look at what his net operating income is on an annualized basis from that space. Now, we are aware of his gross receipts from the site, and they are significant. Those, in our view, are, that's proprietary information, so we can't give you some details. But I can tell you that in sort of a general range of options, it would not be uncommon, given Mr. Shoemaker's margin on the arcade property, there's really two business operations here. There's a restaurant on one half of the leasehold, and there's an arcade on the other. It would not be unheard of for Mr. Shoemaker on a net operating income basis to clear approximately a million dollars a year on an annual basis for his business. He earns at a very high margin. Now, that's a very generic statement. I say that in very rough terms. It's a huge range, hundreds of thousands of dollars on a deviation basis each way. But just from a basic valuation standpoint, when you are considering he is effectively vacating the final seven and a half years of his business operation, he is potentially vacating a significant amount of business earnings as a result of that buyout. Additionally, as I mentioned, we have litigation history with RFCC. Our settlement agreement would absolve us of that, of any outstanding claim and would give us some assurance going forward that we wouldn't see what could very easily be a very expensive lawsuit into the future. So, there are a couple of different ways, from an economic standpoint, to look at this deal, but I think ultimately the price is what the individual is willing to sell it for and what the buyer is willing to pay for it.
So, I understood the lease to be worth about 1.9 million from our conversations.
No, I think the lease is worth, from a net operating income standpoint, much higher than that. He potentially could be earning as much as a million dollars a year in profit, operating this business. So, buying out, buying out a seven-and-a-half-year lease...
So, you're saying it's worth seven-and-a-half million dollars?
I'm saying that's one way to formulate that opinion. It could be worth more than that, it could be less than that, without us getting into specific gross percentage rent figures. That's not, that's not a, that's a fairly objective way to look at it.
I mean, how did we ever enter into this deal knowing we had to deliver the Shoemaker site and really having no plan? This is the plan, to overpay for this lease. That's all I got to say.
Okay. No lights? Anybody in the public want to say anything?
Eugene Solomon, District 2. When we were discussing the boat ramp, one of the major concerns in selecting the Mall B site was that we had to pay out Samba's $6 million. And it wasn't investigated really too deeply because we didn't want to expend the funds. We didn't want to have the money, or we didn't want to expend the funds for the $6 million to buy out Samba's. But now, because we have this option and we're looking to waive this option, or get the option waived, or the Shoemaker lease is problematic for doing something for the developer, we just found $9 million. Now, that strikes me as a policy decision more than anything else, especially when you consider that you have numerous harbor safety personnel come up here and tell you Mall B is the worst place to put a boat ramp, from a safety perspective, which when you look out at the long-term cost to the city, could be millions of dollars. You just saw a $27.5 million judgment against Caltrans that the city attorney was smart in saying we were able to get out of that. But if we put a boat ramp up there for 27 million and accident in the harbor where we knew about it, and now we said we couldn't do it because we didn't have the $6 million, but we just found $9 million out of the tidlins fund. So, I'd be really curious to see how that conversation goes, where it's implausible that we're going to come up with or buy out the Samba's lease because it's too much money and we don't have the money to put the boat ramp in a safe place, in a more reasonable place, according to most of the experts, but we've got to pay, overpay for a lease to free up the option for a developer. And I agree with Councilman San Marco, it's poor planning. And it's just something that is interesting to see where our priorities lie. Is it in the safety and security of our residents, or is it making sure that we clear the deck for a developer so that he can waive an option to build in the South End? That's how it looks to me, to echo what Mr. Bardine said earlier. Are you going to believe what you, are you going to believe what I say, or are you going to believe my lying eyes? So, I like to hear about how we came up with the money and how that decision was made, not to put the boat ramp in a safer place, but to go out, and I understand controlling it is very important, but it seems like we're paying $9 million for a developer so that they can make a deal, not us. They should participate more in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Council, Paul Moses, District 2. I'm very happy to hear that this is a possibility of acquiring this lease. I was going to the Fun Factory when I was a child, and Mr. Shoemaker was making money off me back then, a quarter at a time, and he's made millions. But that, and I've known Mr. Shoemaker for a long time. I've known him personally. The Fun Factory is a great example of what's happened to our pier. It was something that was cool and fun in the '70s and '80s, but it's really lost its luster. And I have a little story to illustrate that. Recently, my sister-in-law and her daughters came down to visit me, and they wanted to go do something the other day, and I said, "Well, you know, you guys can go down to the pier and go to the Fun Factory. Go have fun. It's the Fun Factory." So, they went and played games and really had a good time, and they won some tickets, and they're going to redeem their tickets for a prize. So, their prize was, the one they wanted was the mystery bag. It was a lunch bag, and it was a mystery bag. "Okay, kids, that's what you're getting." So, they get their mystery bag, and inside that mystery bag was a pencil, an ashtray, and a Hustler Casino tank top. These are five- and six-year-old girls. And I just said, "This place has just turned into a swap meet. It's just not what it used to be." And I really, really think this is, this is $9 million well spent. Regardless of what happens with the waterfront, it's just something we need to just be done with and move on from because, you know, knowing Steve, I mean, he got what he got, but it's not what he wanted. And that's fine, because I said, "Go retire, go do whatever you want to go do," but it's time. It's definitely time for this place to go away. And again, if the waterfront doesn't go through, we're better off still. We're better off still. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
Nils Narenheim, District 1, official candidate for Council 1 seat. Suddenly, it's kind of like a somber tone in this room. I mean, this is $9 million of public money. Suddenly, like Eugene said, suddenly we find ourselves with money to be able to pay for this lease. And what are we doing with this lease? All we're doing is we're getting it early, seven years early. Let's put this into perspective. Hermosa spent $17 to $18 million to break a contract for the no-on-o. What did they get for that? Quality of life, and that was it. They're not getting anything tangible. The city of Redondo Beach was promised, "We're going to pay you, build you this great new parking garage and all the amenities." Suddenly, now we're talking about $6 million for Samba's, $9 million now for Fisherman's Cove, $20-plus million for the infrastructure, another $12 million, or, excuse me, some other number for the international boardwalk. I mean, it's like more good money after bad, after good money, after bad, a cycle. It just seems to me that this entire conversation is coming just a little bit early. Mr. Webb said it himself, "The big, huge, unknown elephant in the room is Measure C." Why don't we just put this on ice for a few weeks? This is a lot of money, $9 million. Find out what goes on with Measure C. See where that lends itself. You know, the last budget cycle in June, we were told that we don't have $60,000 for community garden in District 2, and yet now suddenly we have $9 million to buy out somebody early, just to get them out of there, essentially is what's happening, to give us options. And in three years, the place will be dark and the place will be empty. We might not have a tenant for that location. What else is going to be going on? What are the financial impacts to the parking garage, the loss of parking revenue? There's a lot of other issues. Balloon payments, I know, came up earlier about paying off balloon payments. But at the end of the day, I think what we're doing is we're subsidizing a developer for his project. We're bailing out, we're giving this lease and all this money so this developer can do this big mall by the sea, active lifestyle center, movie theater, Megaplex, and Market Hall. I mean, that's what it comes down to. Is that really what we want to spend $9 million on? Let's just wait a little bit of time, see what goes on. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Hi, Gina Di Pietro, District 1. Mike Webb brought charges against Mr. Shoemaker in 2003 for child pornography, and now Mr. Shoemaker registers as a sex offender. This is right, right? That's right? And now we're going to pay Mr. Shoemaker $9 million? I'm shaking. I'm shaking. I can't even fathom how this could be happening and how we cannot work around this somehow and come up with a better option, because it is disgusting. It's disgusting to do something like this. It's just terrible, and I don't know how you could sleep at night when you would be paying anyone that you, you guys, the city of Los Angeles turned those charges down, and then you went on to prosecute him in 2003. I'm right, right? I just don't, you know what? I don't understand the whole story. I only know what I read in the newspaper. And from, and I know Mr. Aspel, Mayor Aspel, you said if Dateline or NBC or anybody knew that we were going to be doing anything with kids, you know, they got a hold of it, we'd be in trouble. Same thing with the carousel. Why are we even putting that in the contract? I don't understand. My head is spinning. I don't understand. This doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense from a moral ground whatsoever. I, is this just greed? Is that it? Is that the only thing driving the city right now?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joy Corredetti. I am a 29-year resident of Redondo Beach. I love Redondo Beach. I was going to be here a little earlier to put my approval in for Center Cal, but I, and for the waterfront project, but I had a class and I'm a little late. But having said that, all of a sudden, I realized I needed to speak on this particular matter, and that is, you know, I do own the business Mystical Joy at the International Boardwalk directly across from the Fun Factory, and I take my daily walks there, and I also have my customers there, and I want to say how much it is crumbling, especially the parking lot there. And being able to get control of this for the parking lot is primary. I mean, regardless of Center Cal, regardless of the waterfront project, I mean, I've mentioned before on this microphone that if we had an earthquake, God forbid, that particular structure over there is really, you know, it's terrible. All we have to do is walk and see how it crumbles and how we have concrete, you know, in the parking lot. Like, and you know, you may laugh, but it's true. I mean, you can see how it's crumbling. So, if we can perhaps get that, if nothing else, to improve our parking lot, our parking structure for the safety of the citizens of Redondo Beach, then it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Hey, Wayne Craig, District 1. There was really good points made here tonight. Mr. Solomon had some points I think that I think we really, really seriously need to consider. Nils has some really good points as well. I'm not going to elaborate much further than saying I think those are serious and we need to pay close attention to them, but the other fact is, $9 million is a lot of money, and I don't know about you, but it's a lot of money to me. I think that could buy how many police officers? I think I figured it out. That's like five or six officers a year for the next, what, seven or eight years? We're talking about infrastructure, things we need in the city, firemen, policemen. Really, $9 million could be better spent elsewhere. And more importantly, the Samba's ramp, which the whole boating community that I've spoken to says, "That's the best location for the boat ramp." All it's going to take is one lawsuit, and this $9 million bucks is going to look like pittance. $27 million is a kind of a low fee compared to the kind of accident fees that I think we're going to see if someone gets killed in the harbor. And frankly, there's experts who were the former harbor masters who said, "If they're called, they're going to have to be experts telling the plaintiff, 'Yeah, I warned the city about that.'" So, I think we need to take some time, look at this. We have time to do this. Why the big rush? Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Zahn, District 4. I don't have totally prepared notes, but I did speak several weeks ago, and my speech was "Us and Them" about leaseholders and the regular people. Leaseholders control and run this city. We are at the point now where we've almost bought out the majority of leaseholders, and what are we going to do with it? Turn it over to somebody else for 99 years, as we've heard today. We won't be here in 99 years. The generation in 50, 60, 70 years is going to look at our automobiles and think of those as covered wagons, okay? So, to put upon their shoulders, our children, our grandchildren, the fellow residents of Redondo Beach, a 99-year brick-and-mortar white elephant is unconscionable that we are going to lock them into a 99-year lease. We're now at the end of some of our leases, and we are in positions that we can make some changes or buy out some leases, but if we lock this land up, this public land, this regional resource for 99 years, what are they going to do? I was talking with Nils, joking, I said, "Right now, it takes a bulldozer to take out what we have." If we go brick-and-mortar, 19 buildings, it's going to take a dynamite to get rid of it. If in 18, 25, 35 years, the public wants to get rid of that lease, what are they going to have to negotiate? Who are they going to be negotiating with? We have no idea. I mean, in 800 years, it could be all robots sitting up here, for all we know.
You know, it's everybody, everybody's right and everybody's wrong in this thing. Oh, someone else? Not going to drag you up here?
You don't have to drag me up.
I know. Everybody else wants to speak, come on down.
Is $9 million a lot of money? You bet it's a lot of money. And $10,000 is a lot of money, too. And it just depends upon what we're getting for it. I'm going to talk to you, and I'm going to try and provide you a little comfort, Council Member San Marco, about what the city is paying and whether it's a good price. Number one, you have to look at the so-called Cosmont Plan that put together by probably the smartest consultant I've met in 40 years in this business, and it is a big, big mosaic, and this is only one piece that will complete the process that was begun over 10 years $9 million certainly can pay for a lot of police officers, but how many police officers will $300 million over the duration of this project pay for? You cannot afford not to buy the last piece that will complete the puzzle that has been begun. You cannot own all of this harbor that you've spent $23, $24 million on without controlling all of it. You can't let the tail wag the dog. You have to buy this. I'm in the real estate business. I bought a large project in Burbank 25 years ago, and the first thing I did was go and buy the little two small pieces of property next to it because I couldn't do anything with my project if I didn't control those two adjacent small properties. I've been in this business for over 40 years, in this marketplace, every single day, watching properties bought and sold. Please allow me to speak to you a little bit about the value of the property. It's a 30,000-square-foot building. $300 a foot for that building is nothing in this marketplace. It's a cash business. Let's take the assumption that Mr. Wisniski said that perhaps it's netting $1 million a year. That means that you're buying this property, and an 11% cap rate, that is not an expensive purchase. Property on the waterfront goes, if you get it at an eight cap, which would make it a $14 or $15 million purchase price, you're still getting... $14 or $15 million purchase price, you're still getting it cheap. The fact is that the last person to sell out in a large project gets whatever they want. And nine million dollars is not an unfair price. Number one, you're gonna pay it in 36 months. If it is a high price, even if it is a high price today, it will not be a high price in three years. You can't compare it to what you paid for any other leaseholds because you bought them years and years ago.
Gonna wrap it up, Bob.
Motion next, Dan.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm just about done. The only alternative to not buying this property would be to condemn this property. And it would put you into years of litigation, years of legal costs, and the court would order you to how much you had to pay for it. And you would run a large risk of paying a lot more than the nine million dollars, particularly if it occurred years down the road. So just in closing, I think you really, you're in it this far. It's, the puzzle's already been commenced by others who came before you, and you can't stop when you're on the freeway. You can't take your foot off the gas pedal. And nine million dollars is not, is not overpaying for what you're getting in the context of that property and the context of the overall project.
Okay.
Elizabeth Moorefield, District Two. I have a question. Given all of the financial information that was presented earlier this evening with the full house, why is this being discussed in the middle of the night when most people have left? It has a strange feel that we're paying a lot of money on a controversial lease that in all probability will or should affect the numbers that were presented earlier. Didn't, aren't we doing this backwards? And if we're not doing it backwards, can someone explain it to me?
This is how the agenda works out. The other one went over a long time.
Well, but this affects, this is a number, this is an input into the analysis that was presented earlier. And it will change those, every single number on those charts, as tiny as they were, are gonna be affected by this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that's it. Well, everybody, I always got a bug right here driving me crazy. The, this is one, this is everybody's right and everybody's wrong, it's a difficult thing. We have, you know, if you were going from Gina, your point of view, then we are losing this business sooner than we would have normally. So it's clearing it out. The, we're not gonna disagree sometimes. The, someday Sambas may have to be dealt with too. And this thing here, I said, what I think would sway the council, as we've discussed, is the fact that the parking structure is in such dire straits that this gives the city the ability to do what we have to do with the parking structure, and it doesn't matter what happens with the rest of the waterfront. And you mentioned about lawsuits or whatever. This, that $27 million could be chicken's feet, chicken feed if somebody got hurt. We have the knowledge that this thing is falling down. We gotta repair this thing. But rather than take the... Months ago, we had an estimate about what it would cost to repair it. I don't even remember the number. It was how much?
Over the next 10 to 15 years, $18 million.
Eighteen? Okay, so this gives us the ability not to Band-Aid it. If we have to, we just rip it down and start from scratch. And, you know, there might not be the need for cars like this. I'm assuming, I'm gonna, we're gonna bet there aren't the need for cars like this in the future. But it's just a way to complete the puzzle. It gets, it cleans up a lot of things at the pier there, and then we get to move forward. And then we have the ability, the city, the citizens have the control of the property. And that's no more, no less. And, you know, it's just something, I think it's the prudent thing to do. Laura.
Thank you. So going back, so you already mentioned the fact that the maintenance would be 15 to 18 million dollars to maintain it. So there's gonna be some cost savings there. In addition to, just to bring up the way I understood your presentation earlier, is the reason it doesn't affect the numbers for, that are on that spreadsheet is because we are refinancing the entire lease acquisition fund, and therefore we'd be paying the same as we are now.
That is correct. And to be fair, the anticipated expenditure here and cash flow, because as you saw with the Outpiff, it's a single-phase project, it's contingent on us having full site delivery. It included the nine million dollars.
That was part of the MOU, is that we, that we signed originally, well, the council before us signed originally, was that we would have full control of the site. And so it was, it's really a way to fulfill our original MOU.
And it, just to be specific, it was in the Cosmont figures, the anticipated nine million dollars, because that is part and parcel to the transaction that will be considered in two weeks.
So just, just so you know, that was part of the figures that was presented tonight earlier. So, other people want to talk? I was gonna make the motion, but okay.
Still can.
I'm gonna move that we approve the Resolution CC-1701-006 and approve the settlement agreement.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Go ahead, Steve.
So, I mean, it's really hard to sit here and listen to this sometimes. And, you know, if you check the record, I was the one arguing for the parking all along, and no one seemed to hear me. That was when there was a phased approach. Now that there's no phased approach, now the parking is an issue. So don't get up there and tell me that I don't care about the parking structure. That's my priority, is the parking structure. But no one, wasn't a priority for anyone else until there was a phased approach, and Mr. Resnick didn't like that idea. So I'm not just gonna sit quiet and say, "Okay, great, yeah, sure, whatever you say." No, no. I argued, I talked about the cement expert saying the cement was only good for five years. I talked about the city manager telling me the worst-case scenario, we'd get two new parking garages and they hand us the keys. I'm up here for those parking garages. But it just seems ironic that, you know, now that we're talking about a phased approach, we can't do that. Some people don't like that. So we're gonna buy this man out and we're gonna get our new parking garages. Well, thanks for seeing the light.
Bill?
Yeah, well, this isn't an easy decision for me. There's good points on both sides. You know, wherever this project goes, it's nice to have control of that parking structure because if Center Cal doesn't work out and you wanna partner with somebody else, you don't have Fisherman's Cove to deal with. And Councilman San Marco's exactly right, there was no plan. I remember Shoemaker sitting here three years ago. Fred Brunings here, Center Cal, we're all talking about this big project. He's just sitting right over there. He come down, he come down to the podium, "Hey, remember me? I own Fisherman's Cove. I'm right in the middle of that project you guys got up there. Nobody has said a word to me, but I'll be sitting right over here." And so he goes, "Sit over there." Right? And I don't think anybody really even talked to him until like the last six months or something. They talked to him briefly a year ago, and he said he wanted 30 million, and then we just went back to planning the project. It's kept on going. And so now, now he gets top dollar. So, look, if I went along with it, it would only be because I'd want a whole piece, not because I wanna make sure the Center Cal project goes through. Right? Center Cal, in my view, is too big, it's too risky, and I know the public doesn't want it when they see the pictures, when they really see it. They don't want it. It's too big. So I wouldn't go along with this just to make sure we keep going on Center Cal. But, yeah, I mean, it's lawsuits, you get a lawsuit. I don't know, I don't like to think that the parking structure's falling down and that it's unsafe, because then we should just red-tag it right now. And every time I've talked to the city engineer, he said that, you know, "No, it's not unsafe. We don't need to red-tag it." So I'm going with that. And that it can be maintained, you know, until it can't. But, I don't know, it's, you know, and then it's nine million dollars to Steve Shoemaker. Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna change my mind. I was, in closed session, I said I'd do it, now I don't think I'm gonna do it.
Okay, Martha.
Okay. A lot has been discussed here tonight, which I'm not sure we're supposed to regarding what was said in closed session or not said. So I will limit myself to those things that others have already said, as opposed to adding more to it. But I can tell you that this has been a longstanding situation and negotiation with Mr. Shoemaker for various reasons. Multi-level pieces as to this, and not necessarily tied to the Center Cal project. We do not discuss those with you. We are not at a liberty to discuss those with you because of attorney-client privilege and so forth. And I'm not sure we're supposed to let you know how either of us vote on these sessions. But I would like you to think about that enough discussions may have happened when we had a unanimous vote, as Mr. Brand and Mr. San Marco has told you, that in closed session, and I'm not disclosing anything they didn't already say, that they voted for this. So there must have been good enough reasons, as we all sat and deliberated for hours in closed session, as to why. There's a couple of things that I want to bring up. Whatever the history with this situation is, and some of it can be quite tawdry and upsetting to many of us that are parents, it's a financial decision and we have to separate these from being an emotional decision. At the end of the day, hastening the departure of that situation is important. And for those of us that have issues, again, let me repeat it. It hastens the departure of a situation we may not be happy with. Additionally, we buy flexibility. We buy the ability, whether it's Center Cal or anyone else, to control what happens in our waterfront, to control what we do or not do with our parking structure. Also, we may not have heard too many details about it, but we have existing litigation that we have no idea what it would cost the city from Mr. Shoemaker. You guys have read about it in the paper. It's been going on and on for years, back and forth. We get complete and absolute resolution to all legal issues between the city and Mr. Shoemaker by ending this. In business, we make those decisions. And many times, we do this in order to end situations, regardless of how you feel about Center Cal or anything else. One question I wanted to ask, because I know many times the term eminent domain has been thrown out, and regarding if this was one way, I'd like to ask city staff, if we had gone along the roads of eminent domain, what could that have cost the city? I'm interested to know. If, and I understand eminent domain has to be for public use, and it was debatable whether we could use that with Shoemaker, but if we had, what would that have cost the city? Because I think that's a good question to ask.
Well, I can, I can tell you that Mr. Webb and I, shortly after I started in this role, attended an eminent domain seminar down in San Diego to sort of try to attempt and assess what our ability would be to actually procure this site via eminent domain, given the circumstances of the larger development project and the like. And, you know, Mike's much more adept, obviously, at the legal issues, but both of us came to the same conclusion very quickly, that this is, that given the circumstances, this was not a site we could acquire via eminent domain. And frankly, if we had tried, we most definitely would have found ourselves in significant litigation that very easily could have drug for him for four to six years, and may have resulted in us paying this much or quite a bit more than ultimately the number we were able to negotiate with Mr. Shoemaker to terminate the leasehold. So it is a, it would have been a very protracted process. It would have been a very litigious process. It would have been a very extensive process. And I don't think there's any guarantee that we would have been able to arrive at a number at this, at this level or better, had we tried it. And there's no certainty that we would have been successful.
Thank you for answering my question.
Christian.
So Gina, I want to tell you that I hear you, you know, and I, I thought about this a lot, and I totally, I totally have the same, you know, concerns and thoughts, you know, when I think about this at home. You know, at the same time though, much to what Martha said, I'd like to get rid of, I'd like to move on from this relationship. I, I know that some people might feel that, that things are overvalued, and as Mr. Resnick said, valuation is kind of in the eye of the beholder. My kids think, you know, 50 bucks is a lot of money. So I, I do trust Bob's input, and I appreciate that, that perspective as well. And I, and I trust, you know, the work that's been done here in coming up with something. Mr. Shoemaker valued his property at over three times what we're paying him. So now I'm not saying that he's right, I'm not saying that we're right, but it's a third of what he thought, or actually, a little bit less than a third. Gene, I just want to go back to something you said earlier. I think you were talking, Sambas, we already own the Sambas property that was purchased years ago. So I think you're referring to Joe's Crab Shack on Mulsanne. I just wanted, since subsequent people continue to mention Sambas. And, you know, everything up here is a judgment call. I think the mayor said it's not necessarily a right or wrong, just like any other thing we discuss, including this project. It's not a matter of right or wrong. It's a judgment call on what's the best thing to do for the city from a fiscal perspective, from a quality-of-life perspective. And we can disagree on what that means, each of us, but at the end of the day, we're making a judgment call on what we think is the best, based on your input, based on our experts' input, based on staff input. So, that's it.
Steve.
So I'm just curious, something Councilwoman Barbie said, and then Mike said. So was this eminent domain idea part of the original Outpiff? And it just didn't work out? Is that what I just heard?
No.
No.
It was never part of the original plan?
He was sitting over there, and they didn't know what to do.
I, you know, I just heard it and I almost couldn't believe it.
There were, well, I think, and again, this predates me, but there, there may have been an iteration of the Outpiff, a draft, an early draft of the Outpiff, that discussed or contemplated that type of an action. Now, that's not a draft, obviously, we're recommending, that's not an Outpiff we're recommending. That's obviously not an avenue we pursued.
Why didn't we pursue it? I'll ask the question.
It's the same answer I just gave. Given the circumstances of the project and the history that we had with Mr. Shoemaker and the RFCC leasehold in general, we did not view eminent domain as a viable, viable legal option.
Okay. Okay. I think, okay. Anybody else? No lights? There's a motion on the floor and a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two opposed, three in favor, two opposed. Okay, motion carries. And let's see here.
Okay, let me read the resolution.
Read it, okay.
Adopted by Title-I Only Resolution Number CC-1701-006, A. of Resident City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, amending the leasing of certain property to Redondo Fisherman's Cove Company, a California partnership. Thank you.
Before I go to the next one, I want to address the lady that made a comment about it's late at night. You know, some cities, I think LA does this in the daytime, but there's never a convenient time. If we do, if a council met in the daytime, there'd be complaints that people have to work and couldn't come. When I was first elected, the meeting started at 6:30, and it wouldn't even later. And sometimes meetings go late, sometimes they don't. If you read the paper, sometimes, you know, other cities go to the wee hours of the morning too. The last thing anybody, when they run for office or once they're in it, wants to do is spend late nights here. So it's not something that goes over well, but I found there's no perfect time. You do it on Saturday, we'd have, we'd have people, couldn't do it, so it's just, it's awkward, so. And we had, the cities do it all the time. I don't want to debate it, I just wanted to tell you what, you know, the city is no, there's no good time to do a council meeting. Okay, so we're gonna move on. Hopefully, this is a good news thing, it's approval of the successor memorandum of understanding with the Redondo Beach Firefighters Association. So bring it on.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you represents the culmination of our negotiations between the city and Redondo Beach firefighters. Redondo Beach Firefighters Association. And as you know, we've been negotiating with them since May 2016, and the Firefighters Association ratified the terms of this new MOU in December, and the MOU contains the following provisions. It's a two-year agreement, expiring June 30th, 2018. It provides salary increases of two percent upon ratification, and then another six percent on July 1st, 2017, but that is in conjunction with both Tier One and Tier Two members contributing a total of nine percent towards their retirement plan. Currently, retirement contributions are not consistent among the three tiers of members, and equalizing them will increase transparency as well as the ease of administration. The agreement also reduces the three percent additional cost share for Tier Three members, who will continue to contribute half of normal costs as determined by CalPERS, which currently runs between ten and a half and eleven percent. It also contains select language changes, such as cleaning-up language regarding the probationary period, and for new members that take a leave of absence, their probation can be extended to conform with a full twenty-four-hour shift. Clarifies fire officer and chief officer certification pay requirements, and tightens up tuition reimbursement language, and complies with Affordable Care Act provisions. The fiscal impact for this current fiscal year is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand approximately, and that money is currently appropriated in this existing budget. For next fiscal year, it'll be approximately three hundred and forty-six thousand. The Firefighters Association represents fifty-two employees in six separate job classifications. And with that, staff recommends that council approve the resolution and attached MOU unless there are any additional questions.
I think we're good. The public wanna say anything?
Hi, I'm Gina Di Pietro, and I'm from District One, and I love the Redondo Beach Fire Department, they are the greatest. Thank you for their service, thank you so much.
We love them, too. Okay, thank you. All right, does anybody wanna make a motion? Or comment? Go ahead, Christian.
Motion to adopt, uh, a resolution of the city council adopting the new MOU with the Redondo Beach Firefighters Association for July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Moving on, read it.
Adopt by title-only resolution number CC-1701-002, a resident of City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of Redondo Beach and the Redondo Beach Firefighters Association. Thank you.
Okay, was it for that? We have same measure items.
Uh, just very briefly, with your last action, we now have agreements in place with three of our unionized groups. At your next council meeting, January 31st, we anticipate bringing forward agreements with three remaining groups, as well as the unrepresented employees. So, wanted to let you know that those agreements are in the process of being put together, so that with that action, it would bring us into agreement with all of our employee groups. So that will be coming in a couple of weeks, along with the follow-up to tonight's discussion on the ALPIF.
Great.
So, that's about it.
Thank you. Okay, anything? Martha?
I'm good for tonight.
Bill?
Yeah, um, two things. Joe, I have some friends who live on, I guess it's 1002 Esplanade, and they were curious what the status of the permit is for 1,000. They're building a huge complex there, I guess it's been going on for a long time. And then, um, you know, I was out talking to neighbors way out in Inglewood Avenue in District Five, and they're kinda up in arms about all the for-sale signs on all the cars there. Is there, like, some ordinance we can pass? I know that cities, some cities forbid parking cars on streets just to sell them, put for-sale signs, and apparently, it's, they're lining Inglewood Avenue with cars on the weekends, and people are pulling over and looking at the cars, and, I don't know, it's, is there...
On, on the first item, I'll have to check on, on the status of those permits. In terms of enforcement regulations related to for-sale signs on cars, I'd have to double-check, but I believe that that's precluded by code, and it's just a matter of enforcement, follow-up action.
Precluded? You mean it's already illegal?
I believe so.
Oh, yeah, well, maybe I should...
So, so let me double-check on that, and if we can...
When I was there, there was just like, for sale, for sale, for sale, and people pulling over and parking illegally to look at them and stuff.
Yeah. Let me do some follow-up work on that as well, and if it's different from what I'm saying, I'll advise all of you.
Thank you. Christian. Steve.
Well, Bill, you just got a couple of votes in District Five.
Mm-hmm. It's okay. It's all about campaigns.
Yeah, just busting in shots. So, uh, Joe, you know, I wanna thank Joe. Joe's, uh, I sent him a lot of emails, a lot of, lot of, lot of text messages, and they all get answered, they get answered probably within the hour, if not, you know, two hours. And the one I've gotten a lot of, and I, and I know, Joe, you've, you've answered this, but I'm gonna make you say it in public, because I've known it, I've noticed it, too. What's with the airplanes? I mean, midnight, two in the morning, it's, it's, it's new, it's not always gone on. I mean, it's like, they're right over my house, and I've probably gotten fifteen or twenty emails about the airplane traffic now over Redondo. And I know you said there's some place you can complain, but is there anything the city can do? I mean, can we write a letter, or is this, I mean, where are we on this, I guess?
As a follow-up to, you know, that, that request, we did make an inquiry to try and find out what, if anything, accounts for low-flying aircraft, noise impacting Redondo Beach. We weren't able to get any information, but, but really, the best course of action is that when residents experience that, there is a complaint process that the LA World Airports has in place. It can either be calling, it could be filling out a complaint form. We'll put that in for...
You think we can put that on TV, on the little scrolling thing?
We can put that on TV, we can put it on our webpage.
Webpage.
And, as much as people can provide the specifics of where and when, then that will allow the airport to do research, and they'll get back.
Eleven o'clock midnight here, between eleven and two.
Yeah, it's just, Laura, you?
Thanks for bringing that up, that was an issue that's going on. What I understood at the ICA meeting from some, a representative FAA, they're, they're changing how they fly in because of those jumbo jets. And so we're not the only ones experiencing it. And so, there is some changes going on, so it would be very important for every citizen to complain to that website that's gonna be on there, and, uh, so that they get the data.
Yeah, let's put that up.
Yeah, I had notes about that, too, 'cause we've been getting emails from various parts around the city. And, uh, you know, before, it would be a storm or something, they'd have to come in a different direction, but they seem to be coming over more often now. Now it might be the new norm, and there might be nothing we can do about it, but at least we can probably find out, put on a website where people can complain, 'cause it's, it's now random, they're, they're contacting all of us about it. And, uh, I grew up in Westchester, I don't wanna have that come over my house all the time. Which is, which is interesting, you know, for those of you who live in the farther south, the only reason we don't have more jets flying over is because they don't sell jet fuel at Torrance Airport. That comes up every year or so. And, uh, that's when we would have to have Redondo residents go to Torrance and complain, because, uh, that would be a, true to Santa Monica Airport, is what would happen. Okay, I think that's it. We have no closed session, we have referral staff out of the way, we're going to adjourn until next week.
January 31st.
Thirty-first. All right, goodnight, everybody.